I'd like to call this February 4th, 2021 Regular Board of Education Meeting to Order. Mr. Onagastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Soli?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
And Mrs. Howson?
Here.
All are present, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is district goals. Our three district goals remain the same: student achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And the pandemic challenges them all, but we will respond. Next is public comment. I see none. Next is treasurer's report. Mr. Onagastu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for the agenda tonight, one discussion item and one item for consideration. The first item is continuation from our food services discussion. I have here tonight the team from Chartwells. Chef Mike, who's our Director of Dining Services. Will King, who is the District Manager. And Heather Rogers, who's the Regional Director of Operations. And they wanted to come tonight and present to the board and the community and give a mid-year update on the food service program, how they've been operating amid the pandemic and also some community give back that they've been doing throughout the year as well. So, Will, Chef Mike, Heather.
Hello. Well, my name is Will King. I'm the District Manager here in Ohio. Some of your faces are familiar and some of you are fairly new to the board, so welcome. Just wanted to give you a recap of what Chartwells has been doing for Strongsville City Schools so far this year, a little bit since the pandemic happened. This is an introduction to our leadership team. Myself up there, District Manager. We have Heather Rogers here, Regional Director. Of course, Michael's here, Director. Brian Casey is our Vice President. And just a couple of months ago, we had our Regional Dietitian, Callie Gaboric, and Regional Executive Chef Jennifer Brower. They were here. They worked with Michael and the team, just working on recipes, nutrition, things like that. A little bit about Chartwells. We have 10 neighboring districts here in Ohio that I oversee. There's 13 district managers within our region that appears that I can kind of bounce ideas off of. And we have 215 districts within our region. And we've been here for five years. And so far this year, we've done 225,000 meals. Much lower than typical, but that's due to the pandemic. So a little bit about the serving format this year, it's been quite a bit different. And, but this has been also exciting at the same time. Michael, we've had some flexibility waivers from the ODE, which allowed us to do serving in a different format. As you can see, these are some pictures of bagged food. Those are five days of seven day meal packages that we were able to put together and distribute throughout the community. And you could see parents and families coming to pick them up. And then the team hard at work putting everything together. So through rain, sleet, or shine, as Michael would say, we've been making it happen. So definitely unique. I'm sure we'll have plenty of memories. Over the summer, also the USDA approved a waiver to continue emergency feeding. So when the pandemic hit last March, we were able to change our program. Typically, we run off the National School Lunch Program and we are able to switch over to SSO, Seamless Summer Option. And that gave us some flexibility to serve throughout the summer when typically we wouldn't. And we were able to serve 12,000 meals out to the students over the summer. And hopefully, we're going to be able to continue that. We'll see what school looks like this year, but if we can continue it, we will. Little belated happy holidays, I guess I would say. But Chartwells created a seven day meal kit that we distributed to students during winter break. We really didn't want any students to go hungry over the holidays. So these seven day meal kits, we handed out two weeks' worth. So each family got to pick up two boxes. Michael worked with his team to make sure they were distributed. There's emails that went out from the school district. Parents could sign up on a Google Doc and, you know, they could set up a time to come pick up. And so it turned out to be pretty exciting, had a good turnout. And we're looking toward the spring. So spring break, we plan on doing it again so we can help families out again during that time. This is a very exciting program that Michael introduced here this year. This is the Farmers to Families Food Box. It's the USDA partnered with farmers, ranchers, especially crop producers. There was a lot of food that was produced this year, but wasn't distributed out to the restaurants that needed it because of the pandemic. So they didn't want this food going to waste. It was there, something had to be done with it. So there were some grants that were passed. And Michael worked with our Premier Produce, that's our produce vendor, to get this food free, free of charge, which was great. And we handed out 82,000 pounds' worth of free produce over the summer. And then again, this fall and winter, we handed out 250,000 pounds. So over 330,000 pounds of food went out to the community free of charge. It was really awesome. And there's some pictures here. I think I'd like Michael to talk about just the pictures and the distribution of it. And you could see it was quite the project. These boxes here weighed 40 pounds each. So, and you could see the line of cars that were lined up to pick them up. So, Michael?
We had some great stuff inside of those boxes. We had some liquid eggs, butter, sour cream, different types of cheeses, some cooked proteins, fruits and veggies, apples, oranges, celery, onions, potatoes, cabbage, that sort of thing. And we really couldn't have pulled it off without the help of all the volunteers throughout the community, from families, students, PTA, board members, even the Quanis Club and church organizations. So very grateful for that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Send a Smile Campaign. This is a program that we worked with our sister sector, Morrison Living. And what we did is we worked with Strongsville City School Elementarys. And we were able to get the students to write letters, draw pictures. And we sent those to seniors and senior living care that just couldn't have any visitors or gather in groups. So it was really just, that's it. It's a Send a Smile campaign. I mean, that was really the focus behind it, was to bring a smile to those that really needed it. And so Michael brought, did you hand those out?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So you're looking at some of the letters that the students wrote and the pictures they drew. It's just more of a feel-good campaign, so it was really nice. Just wanted to share that with you. These are some unique programs that Chartwells brings to the table. They're unique to Chartwells. And Mood Boost is an elementary-based program. These little characters here, those are called our Moody's. Each one of the Moody's has a mood associated with them. Either they're happy, or strong, or alert. And really, the idea behind the program is, Michael has these characters. Well, we started right when the pandemic hit, so when we get back into school here, he'll continue the program. But these characters will have clings that are in the servery lines. The students can see them. There's giveaways that we give to the students. See their little recipe cards that they can take home and make recipes with their family. And the idea behind it is to associate healthy foods with your mood. So get kids out of their comfort zone, try new things, and let them know that eating healthy does make you feel good. Student Choice, which I'll go into more on this next slide. But Student Choice is a unique program we run in the secondary schools. It allows the students to get to vote on the food that's on the menu. And the way that works is Michael will have an event and he'll make fresh food for the students to come up and sample and taste. And they taste it, they get to vote on it, and the winner gets to be on the menu. And then we can do this again every couple of months so that their voices are heard. It's a really fun event. Discovery Kitchen, this is an opportunity for Chef Michael to kind of showcase his skills. He sets up a table and again, has the students come up. And it's really just a tasting event. He'll do some live presentations, so he'll show some knife skills, some recipe skills there. And then the students get to taste the food. Again, try to get them to get out of their comfort zone and try new things. And then Sports Nutrition is a program that we look forward to in the future, working with the coaches in the district. And we can have our Regional Dietitian come down and educate the coaches and the students and the athletes, what food is good for their body to keep the field that they need to keep going. So here's just a picture of the Student Choice event that we had last year. And this is some of the students there. What we had was the Bon Mee sandwich at Napa College Law and a Curry aioli. And then the Nashville Hot Chicken Sandwich was the winner. That seems to be a real popular one. If anybody likes Chick-fil-A, that sandwich tastes almost identical to Chick-fil-A. So we nailed that one. But there's nine different concepts that we have. And they kind of mimic restaurant-style food, so it's kind of exciting for the students. These are some unique programs that are unique to Chartwells. Nutrislice is an online platform for parents in the community to see their students' menus. They can go online to strongnetnutrislice.com or they can download the app to their mobile device. They can look at menus a month in advance for any school. So all you have to do is go on your phone, it's really quick. You select Strongsville City Schools, select whatever building you would like, and then there will be your menu. Michael updates that menu every month. Again, you can see your dietary and allergy restrictions, and it's available in 50 different languages, which is really nice. Web Nutrition is one of our proprietary programs. Couldn't get that one out. That was a tongue twister. This is our unique program. It has over 14,000 recipes that our regional chefs and dietitians have created. So they're all ours, they're all approved by the USDA. So we have a lot to choose from in there. We can also print out signage or nutritional information for anyone that needs it. And then Serve Safe. Serve Safe, as it says, is a training course that certifies managers, so they have the knowledge in food safety and sanitation. Michael is a certified proctor, so he's able to teach these classes. He certifies them, they take the test, he sends it off. And then once they get approved, they become certified. Our Health Department requires that each one of our kitchen leads is Serve Safe certified. Reopening with COVID. Well, this was a challenging one. You know, last year, Chartwells jumped on it really quickly and said, well, how are we going to operate under this pandemic? So we created a playbook. And that playbook really helped us figure out ways that we could serve food in a safe environment while protecting everybody there at the school. So we focused on social distancing, masks, gloves, washing your hands, daily temperatures of the employees, increasing the cleanliness and sanitation of the buildings. With the Cafeteria Payment Solutions, we've really tried to have no touch points. So the elementary students can go right through the line. They don't have to touch anything, so there's no cross-contamination. We just check them off. And with the secondary schools, they use their badges and we scan them. So nobody's touching anything. So they grab their food and then they can go out and eat. So that's kind of nice. We've done some different meal services here. In elementarys, we're bringing food to the classrooms. We're doing the take-home for the virtual students. They can still continue to pick up meals today. And then, of course, we're having cafeterias are back open. So, and all the signage, mainly this signage here that you're looking at is primarily in the secondary locations. And it's just to help educate the students, to remind them to keep their distance, with social distancing, you know, where to stand, and just kind of help navigate, I guess, that service to the dining room. This here is just kind of an update on the Department of Defense Produce Award. And what you do, this is a fresh fruit and vegetable program that the United States of Defense produces every year, and you're awarded this amount. So this is just a little three-year history. $60,000, 1819, '77, and 1920, and $75,000 in 2021. And Michael makes sure that all those dollars gets used. A recap on the financial impact over the last five years. The $425,000 in rebates. Chartwells is a part of a much bigger company, Compass Group. And Compass Group has a lot of bargaining power and purchasing power. So we purchased so much product that we're able to get discounts. Instead of keeping that money, we kick it back to the district. So that comes back on an invoice to the school. So $425,000 over the last five years, we've been able to give back. We've increased participation 45% over the last five years. Revenues have been up. And we've also given back $111,000 in guarantees back to the district. And finally, we're going to continue serving up happy and healthy for Strongsville students. And we're going to serve food that kids love. And Michael's good at doing that. Provide experiences that encourage fun and discovery through our programs that we're utilizing. And just empower associates to create fun and welcoming environments. So with that, I just want to say thank you for having us and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Hopefully, we can answer them.
Thank you, Will. Do we have any questions?
I'm just curious, going into next year, obviously, COVID and everything else as far as the precautions that were taken, I think, have been great. You guys have done a great job with that. What do you see, I guess that aside, what do you see kind of the nutrition and the food offerings progressing for the students in the coming years?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I think COVID definitely had a setback on us. You know, we were seeing a nice, steady growth up pre-COVID. And then COVID things kind of took a backward slide. So I'm really hoping that, I'm sure as everybody is, that the vaccine comes out and maybe this fall, we're back to a normal school setting format. And so we're going to continue to, you know, use these programs that we have, utilize the Student Choice, the Mood Boost. And all those things are really nutrition-based. And so food quality is always a focus. Trying to build participation is always a focus. So Student Choice is a great way to, like I said, get the students involved in eating the food because they have a choice. Mustang Cafe, we introduced the Mustang Cafe a few years back. We'd like to hopefully see that kind of come back. Right now, it's closed due to COVID. The Mustang Cafes at the high school by the library. We had some decent sales when we started it. We're hoping to kick that back off as well. So, does that answer your question, or are you looking for something more specific?
Yeah.
And Michael Allen, if you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Hopefully, eventually, next school year, we can get away from some of the individually prepackaged portions of food, fruits and vegetables, and bring back the self-serve fruits and vegetables bars and main order stations.
Yeah. We have an Extra Extra Bar that has temporarily been taken away. The Extra Extra Bar, the students can have their lunch, and then they can go to the Extra Extra Bar and have all the fruits and vegetables they want. It's a very colorful array of vegetables and fruits. But right now, due to cross-contamination and utensils and things like that, we've had to limit that and then kind of put things into portion sizes and cups. And so it does take away some of the presentation and the visuals that are there. So we're hoping that'll be able to come back. If not, we'll work around it. We'll continue to work around it. Any other questions?
Is Nashville Hot Chicken Sandwich still on the menu?
Well, Michael?
Certainly not, but we will certainly bring it back.
Yeah. It's a hard one to do under the current circumstances, but yeah, we can bring it back as soon as we get things kind of back to normal. It is a delicious sandwich.
It's best when it's dipped into the sauce and put right on the bun and served fresh to you.
Have you had challenges with the flavor of the food because of the COVID restrictions?
Yes. I know, Michael, you could touch on this one, but I think probably more to the delivery processes of it, but go ahead, Michael.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
Have you had challenges with the flavor of the food or just the quality of the food? Because it's a different delivery with all the various COVID restrictions?
Certainly, the integrity of some of the food at the elementary level has been a challenge with having to package it up in the kitchen, put it on carts, deliver it down to the classroom, and wait for the students to come back from recess. So by it sitting in a foil wrapper inside of a bag, it does affect the quality of, say, the bread and the protein.
Yeah. I mean, it's not going to be the same as going through the lunch line, getting it fresh and hot, and going out and eating it. So the delivery aspect of it has changed it a little bit. So it's temporarily, hopefully, and we'll continue to work through it and find ways that we can to continue to increase the quality.
Any other questions? I just want to take the opportunity to thank Chef Mike for his leadership and all the hard work he's done during the pandemic. It doesn't go unnoticed. The community appreciates it, and we appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Well, thank you very much. We hope to see you again soon.
Thanks for joining us. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then the second item I have for consideration is just establishing a petty cash fund for the student activity count. 322, which is the end vacational, which is the state of student activity. Then there's the high school derby, which is a big spirit shot at the high school that these people think that will operate. So establishing a petty cash fund, $100 for it. And it's more for the cash register that feel about changing the region. And that, with that, I actually require to be done here.
Also to note, I don't know if it's going to be covered in legislative update, but the governor did release his state budget and for education funding. Right now, he left the funding the same as it was pre-COVID cuts at the state level. He kept the wellness funds. I believe there was an increase to that. But he was more or less deferring to the House of Representatives to come up with, to introduce a new funding formula for school funding. And I believe the fair school funding that was previously passed by the House is going to be reintroduced. So more on that to follow in the next couple of months. This is the last year of the biennium, so they're preparing for the next biennium, '21 to '22.
And I'll just piggyback on that. I read in the news that the governor did keep the education portion of the budget. He pushed forward as a placeholder, fully expecting the legislature to work on that. And in interviews, Bob Cupp for the House did announce that it is his intention to pass a new funding formula, to start it as a separate bill, and then once it's passed, to roll it into the new budget. So the next six months are going to be very interesting on that front. And we look forward to Senator Dolan and Representative Patton representing us well. And then the other comment I wanted to make is that earlier today, we did have our post-budget meeting. And it's important for the public and the community to know that we had a unmodified opinion, which in my estimation is fancy accounting speak for a clean audit. And so we wanted to congratulate George and his team, especially Assistant Treasurer Kyle. But that's important for us and for the community that we continue to have those clean audits. So thank you, George.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, during the post-audita, it's a team effort. So thank you to everyone in the district. It's a team effort that we all work together, and it's what we strive for.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Superintendent's Report. Dr. Iba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Just a couple of updates and then we'll take any questions or feedback from the board. I wanted to share with everybody, and I shared with the staff earlier today, that we did get our official vaccination dates for the staff. And just to kind of clarify, because there's a lot of procedures with this. So the state has designated counties for different time periods to get the vaccine. In Cuyahoga County, because it's so large, across the state, they've designated that Educational Service Centers, they will help support and oversee the coordination of this and then assign specific days and times for districts. So as a school district, our provider, the provider for most of Cuyahoga County is Giant Eagle. Giant Eagle works with the Northeast Ohio Educational Service Center. And they've been asking for information. We've been giving estimates and accurate counts of how many staff members are going to get vaccinated. We sent that to all of them a little bit ago. And then today, they designate all of the dates and the time. So what I'm going to share with you is not, Strongsville has a choice. It is basically, hey, we've got a lot of school districts in Cuyahoga County, and here's your date and time. So what we have gotten, and I can highlight it here. So Thursday, February 11th, that's our first dose. And what they have asked for is that we are to assign X amount of people per timeframe. And for Strongsville, our time slot is ranging from roughly 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, or a little later into the afternoon there. So that's going to take pretty much the whole day to get all of our staff that are volunteering to be vaccinated, vaccinated. So what that means is that needs to be an asynchronous learning day. Our staff, the vaccination is going to occur in Independence at the Educational Service Center. That's where all of Cuyahoga County's staff is going to be vaccinated. So we have to have travel time to go there. We have time slots. Again, we're talking about over 800 people, nearly 900 people, that are going to get vaccinated. So throughout the day, we're not going to have the staff available to run school as we normally would. So there will be no students on February 11th, and it will be an asynchronous day. Which an asynchronous day means, kids will access their work on Google Classroom and engage with that independently without a live teacher. So it will not be a remote learning day. You'll just do your work at home. Then, with the vaccine, it's three weeks after, right? They want to get the vaccine, so they've already scheduled our second dose. And our second dose is on Thursday, or March 4th. So three weeks after, same place, same time, same everything. But, so that is also going to be, same rules, that is also going to be an asynchronous day for all the reasons I just mentioned. So I will be sharing that with our parents, if not tomorrow, sometime over the weekend, so that they're up to date, that what were in-person learning days on Thursday, February 11th, and Thursday, March 4th, will now be asynchronous learning days. Any questions on that before I continue on?
Will parent-teacher conferences be affected at all next Thursday night for secondary?
So I haven't made that decision yet. That's a popular question I've gotten from the staff today. But no, that will be part of the decision that I'll communicate out. I haven't finalized that one yet. So it'll either stay the same, or if it is moved, we'll keep the same schedule, just a different day. But we're trying to, we know there's been a ton of disruptions, right? And we're trying to keep things at a minimum. And so conferences are already virtual, so we're looking at options to what we can do with that. Any other questions on the vaccination dates? All right. So then the next part becomes, you know, how do we handle, we're on a Thursday. You know, in talking to those in the medical profession, you know, talking to those that have received the vaccine, and we are getting the Pfizer vaccine, that there are, you know, consistent themes of, you know, the second dose may have some minimal recovery time. So not as much with the first dose. But right now, we already have an asynchronous Professional Development Day scheduled for this Friday, February 12th. So we have professional development, we have training with our diversity consultant. Jenny has professional development planned with our model Mustang, our Portrait of a Graduate work. So this is not a day where we can say, oh, okay, we can just cancel it. We've got critical work to our overall operations and development to have happen. So what we talked about, once we got this date, is do we keep that 12th the same? And then we would have two asynchronous days back-to-back. Or do we move it to another week so we only have, you know, one asynchronous day a week? After, you know, talking and getting some feedbacks from some different parent groups that we have contact with and getting their feedback from a parent perspective, the overwhelming feedback was, keep those days consecutive. It helps us out with, you know, daycare, it helps us out with consistency with our students. Rather than, you know, making two weeks, two separate weeks, keep it all together. So I am recommending and planning on that Friday, February 12th, will continue to be an asynchronous day. If there's any concerns with a reaction to the vaccine, that's something, all of our PD can be virtual. So it helps create that environment where we don't have to worry about, what if there is a reaction, we don't have substitutes, what do we do for that day? And then it gives everybody a nice, long weekend to make sure everybody's okay and get back at it on the 16th. So February 12th is So February twelfth is already a scheduled asynchronous day. I'm recommending and planning that we keep that on the twelfth. When we look into March, right now in March, and let me back up, just clarify. So Thursday and Friday would both be asynchronous days. Students would get online, check out their work, do what they need to do, submit what they need to submit, without any teacher live instruction. Monday is President's Day. That's a day off for everybody. When we go to March, we've got March fourth, which is an asynchronous learning day, because it's the vaccine day. But we have this March fifteenth in there. It's already a professional development day. This is a non-student day. And so what I am suggesting, to keep things consistent, and my concern about the second vaccine, is that we now make the fifteenth the fifth. So we would once again follow that same pattern of two consecutive days. That would give us the fifth and the sixth and the seventh, and then, you know, have our staff ready for the eighth. So I can't be fancy with different colors. But fifteenth would be a normal school day. Kids would show up and they'd go to school. The fifth would now be a professional development day for staff. We would work and we can do a virtual PD, but it would be a non-student day. There would be no asynchronous learning, which would just be a day off for students. And then the fifteenth, we would update the calendar, and this would just be a traditional school day. So the hope and wish is after we get through March fifth, we've got a traditional school calendar. You know, you'll, I know there's colors here, but after the fifth, March is, there's no, it's all straight student days in March. We have spring break in April, and then April through May. The only day that's in there is, well, it's not even Memorial Day this year, because that's after the last day of school. So that would follow a traditional plan. There's no more professional development days after that March fifth. So in terms of the rationale for consecutive days, for consistency for families, protecting and buffering in time for our staff, should there be any reactions to the vaccine, I believe that's the best course of action. The only thing that, I mean, there's other things, but the main thing about, you know, what are we going to do at parent-teacher conference? We'll, we'll share that. But that's the plan I wanted to share with the board and see if you have any other feedback or thoughts that you would like to be taken into consideration.
Does anyone have any follow-up questions or discussion? From, from my perspective, my opinion, I think that's the most straightforward plan. I don't have any disagreement with it. I think it makes the most sense. I would, I would share, you know, literally, we found out our day when?
This morning around seven AM.
So it, you know, we're planning the best we can with the minimal amount of notice. But it's important that we take advantage of the vaccine, and it's important that we get this done. So as far as I'm concerned, you have, you have whatever information or, or direction you need from the board. I think the sooner we announce it, the better, the sooner we get it out to parents, because it is going to affect planning for parents. It's, it's five or 10 minutes of conversation for us. But parents who have already planned daycare, daycare or what have you, are going to need to juggle those days.
Yeah. And so we'll communicate that quickly. And, you know, just in terms of the vaccine, you know, we're still finalizing all the rostering and registration. That has to be done by Monday morning. But based on all of our soft counts and official counts, we are in the low ninety percent range of our staff being vaccinated. So that, that's a huge number, right? So when you take a look at that, who is getting vaccinated? Anybody that's a Strongsville City Schools employee, that's, so that's all of our teaching staff, all of our support and administrative staff, all of our active substitutes, and any of our paid coaches that do not work for the district in another fashion. So we'll get a, you know, once the dust all settles, we'll be able to get an accurate assessment of each group. But, you know, every, every, everything we've done, we are, you know, in the eight hundreds of people that are getting vaccinated. And so that's exciting. We have, you know, we've talked in the past about substitutes, right? And the need for substitute staff. We do have substitutes that were very much active with us, but because of COVID, have not. But once they get the vaccine, they will be able to help bolster our subpool as well. So that's exciting news for us. Moving on to the next thing, I just wanted to give an update as to, you know, the, this is the building metric slide that we've started a few weeks ago. We updated it, I updated it today for this past week. So this is from Friday, January twenty-ninth through Thursday, February fourth, as of earlier this evening. So again, what I've shared in my initial communication of this is if you look at this, this is just based on specific data from the buildings. Green means lower risk, yellow means moderate risk, and red means higher risk. What I've, what I've cautioned people, don't add up yellows and reds. There's other data that we, that I utilize altogether. There's 12 different criteria that we, that I utilize. And that criteria has different metrics for each one, as you can kind of see the higher risk in the left-hand corner. And then all of that totals together and puts the buildings all together in different categories that gets our attention. So one of the things that I do to make sure is Jenny and I sat down and met this afternoon, and I talk about, here's what my data is telling me, as the COVID coordinator, is this, is this, are going together with what you are seeing in the buildings and hearing from the principals? And so for example, when we take a look at this, we could say preschool, it's got some, some, some of each, each rating, but I have the preschool as in a good spot. You know, their isolation rate for a hundred thousand is a little higher, but you have to look at the population is so small that that's naturally going to be a higher number. So I tell Jenny, hey Jenny, based on my data, you know, the preschool is not on the radar? And she says, yes, from what I, from talking to the principals, knowing the contact tracing, preschool's not on my radar either. Okay. We go to Chapman, and I say Chapman's on my radar. You know, what, here's what I've got for Chapman. You know, what are you seeing? Is there something else that we need to do? So earlier this week at Chapman, we, we, we started placing classrooms in remote learning. So one of our special education classrooms, we decided based on, you know, quarantines and isolations we were having, that we would place that classroom in remote learning. And so when we went through the data that I'm seeing and the specific numbers, we could trace the majority of the spike in the data to that classroom. And so we talk about, you know, is it outside of that classroom? Are we seeing it at other grade levels? No. So we're okay otherwise. In Chapman, we've placed that classroom into remote. We will communicate with those families. We told them that they would be remote until Friday. We wanted to see where things settled. We'll be communicating with those families tomorrow, when they can officially move from remote to in-person learning. So we'll do that tomorrow. So in Chapman, even though it's on the radar, we feel we've, you know, the cluster we saw is now in remote learning, and it's not spreading elsewhere. Kinsner is on the watch list for us. You know, we've had a spike at Kinsner. Again, we, we took a first-grade classroom at Kinsner earlier in the week and moved that from in-person to remote learning. As we take a look at the spike in there, we can, we can, you know, direct or trace everything back to that class. Not everything, but the majority of it back to that classroom. Or, and then the other ones are random. They're not related to that classroom. And we know the reasons why, or majority of the reasons why there's been a positive case there. So since we only have, if you take a look at spread, right, that's a concerning metric, is that we're, we have suspected or documented spread. That suspected or documented spread is in that classroom and with another group of employees that are not associated with the classroom. So we have two separate distinct that there was spread with, but it's not spreading beyond those two groups. So we feel comfortable moving forward for next week, that Kinsner will remain open. That classroom will be remote, and we'll call those families tomorrow to let them know when they can return back to school. So right now at Kinsner, you know, everybody that's in-person will plan on being in-person next week unless things change and we see a spike in cases outside of that classroom. Maraski and Sarar and Whitney are not on the radar based on our metrics. Jenny confirmed that, that that's not on her radar either. The middle school is on the metrics, you know, on the watch list for me. But as you take a look at that, that staff absence rate and teacher fill rate, those absences are related to other medical issues or other health issues, not COVID-related. So this picks it up, right? When we say staff absences, this is just how many staff are absent. And substitutes were a little more of a challenge at the middle school this week, but livable. So there's no changes at the middle school, because it's, it's not related to COVID. And then finally, the high school is, is on the watch list as well. The absence rate there is COVID-related. We have had a little cluster in a, in a department at the high school. But when we take a look at it again, the reason that we had, and then you look at that spread, right? The reason we had that spread is in this cluster of staff and this cluster of students. And we're not seeing it spread beyond right now that cluster. We've talked about before, at the high school, you can't just shut down a classroom or shut down a grade level, just because of how that works. So we're going to keep an eye on it. And again, I want everybody to know that we are still being extremely cautious. We look at this, we take this seriously. If we are seeing things beyond these clusters, then we need to make the decision, just like we did on Tuesday evening or whatever it was, to say, hey, this classroom at Kinsner needs to go to remote learning. And so we work with those, those families. So we're not looking at any other changes for the high school for the upcoming week. We'll just continue to keep an eye on those two clusters. One of the other things that we did is one, we also saw a spike in, in one of our athletic teams that's out of season. And so we've closed down all out-of-season workouts for that team for a period of time to, to address that. So those are the things that we're working on for the high school. So that, that's the building update as to where we're at, who's on, who's, who we're keeping an eye on, who's in a good spot, and the reasons why we've made some decisions and why we've kept things open. I'll pause there to see if there's any feedback or questions from the board.
I do think it, it should be noted that we've moved to a position where we can be, I don't, I don't want to use the word surgical, but where we can be more directive and not, and not just, you know, throw the, throw the baby out with the bathwater, to say it that way. But to be able to say, if, if, if an infection is localized to a classroom, we can be smart and, and remote that classroom, but not have to switch frameworks for the entire school or the entire district. And I think that's very, been very beneficial for us.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. And I'd also add that, you know, we're making decisions based on data, but we're also verifying that data with the people that are in the building. So I had a, a parent email me today about Kinsner saying, I'm concerned. I'm hearing that there's a lot of kids out, not, you know, absent in, in the class. But when we talk to the building secretarial staff, when we talk to the principal, there may be more kids out, because maybe there's some nervousness about, you know, what's going on. But those are not COVID-related absences. So we're not going to close down a classroom or a grade level or a building when we have absences. They're not symptomatic-based. They're, they're, they're not COVID-based. So those are the things that we kind of fact-check to see, are we on the right track with that?
I had a parent reach out to me after the last board meeting, and she missed your explanation of like, hey, as a parent, when I look at this, what do I make of it? Can you give us a quick, because we don't know, like, you're, you know, like, you guys have lots going on. And I know it's not one-to-one. There's no specifics. So when they look at this and they see all these colors, how are, what, what conclusion can they draw?
Well, I, you know, what I would look at is, for them, for a parent looking at a building, I would look obviously down the column. And even though I say, you know, don't add them up, you do want to look at the, the trends of it, right? So when you take a look, what I would look at as a parent, if I'm seeing predominantly yellows and greens, we're good. You know, we're, we're in a good spot. It's when you start to see those reds that you want to take a look at where those reds are at. And so the staff absence rate doesn't necessarily equate to COVID. But so you want to look at staff absence rate and fill rate together. If we have a high, if we're, if we're in the red and absence rate, and we're in the red and fill rate, that's something I want to be concerned about, right? But like Chapman and Kinsner, we had a high absence rate, but we had almost a hundred percent fill rate for these, for these. So as a parent, what I would look at predominantly, if I were them, is I would look at the last two rows. Isolation rate for a hundred thousand and school spread. You know, when I see those in red, that's something that I would want to get a little more information on and clarity as to, you know, why, why that's happening, because those are the two indicators of positive COVID cases. And how, you know, positive COVID cases of prevalence and then spread. So those are things where then I can give context, or we can give context to say, is it such, is it located in a cluster? Or is it throughout the building? So those, that's what I would give advice to. Yeah. And then the other, the other update that I wanted to provide is just, you know, we, we, the quarantine rules have changed a lot in the last month, right? So, you know, we went from fourteen days to ten days to, you know, possibly eight days, if you, if you get tested on day five, six, and seven, to if you're above three feet, but within six feet, you know, you can still go to school, but you can't do anything else. So I understand the confusion and people trying to figure this all out, you know, as I was talking on a virtual meeting today. The principals and Jenny and I, we deal with this every day. And so it's just second nature to us, but you hear it. It's like a, a new language, you know? So one of the things I would say is, even though our quarantines have gone up, they would have been significantly higher if these new quarantine rules were not there. In terms of the, if you were between three and six feet, you could still go to school. So that's been a positive. And the other positive has been, we haven't seen, Jenny corrected me if I'm wrong, we haven't seen students that we've allowed come to school contract the virus, just the same as we've had in the past. So, so the idea being, we've got these new quarantine rules, but are, are they resulting in these clusters and in these spikes? And so, so far, our data is no. Our, our data is the kids that, they're still direct contacts, they're still quarantined, but they can come to school. They're not causing increased spread, and they're not, you know, contracting the virus. The other thing that I want to share, and this is, this is probably the most popular question I've gotten the last few weeks, is why can, the rule doesn't make sense. Why can my child go to school, but they can't participate in a sport or an extracurricular? Why does that make sense? Don't ask me. I didn't make the rule. We're just implementing the rule. So this is an Ohio Department of Health rule. This is not an OHSA rule. This is not a Strongsville City Schools rule. This is an Ohio Department of Health rule. Although I joke of, don't ask me, the rationale behind that is that when you do these other activities, you're not wearing masks. You're not socially distanced. The research has said that schools are a safe place, because we've got all of these protocols in place. The risk becomes greater if I'm going to go play basketball and take my mask off and, and guard you for a half of a basketball game. So there is logic behind it. There is a research study behind it. So I just wanted to be clear that, you know, what it says from the Ohio Department of Health is, close contacts, direct contacts, who can continue to attempt in-person school, should follow the normal protocols for quarantine when outside of the K-12 classroom environment. So we've had some people ask for, you know, can I see this? That's the statement that, that excludes it in, in terms of students cannot do anything else other than school. So that is the rule that we will continue to implement moving forward. Jenny, I know you deal with this every day. Is there any other updates that you'd want to share or you think is important to discuss tonight?
I just, I just want to share that we're not out of the woods yet. You know, I feel like when I'm hearing stories of, and I know our kids are, have had enough. I have a seventeen-year-old daughter, and, and she's reached her limit. You know, it's really tough. But please discourage gatherings, discourage going out with friends, driving in the cars, especially at the second, obviously, the secondary level, when they tend to do that, because we are seeing cases that pop up like that. I know it's hard to not have your child want to go to their best friend's house to sleep over. You know, we've, we've had cases there. You know, things are starting to open up, pick back up, and it's, it's really hard to say no to your child. I know. I have three of them, and they, they ask me all the time, can I do this and that? Wear your masks, please. You know, that is where we're seeing more cases. And, you know, let's try, try to be as careful as we possibly can. We want school to remain open. You know, I am proud of our staff that continues to come each day and, and do the best that they can. It's going to be inevitable. We still will have direct contacts. Teachers are going to be, especially at the elementary level, they want to work with the kids. They're going to get closer to them. But we are following all the safety protocols, and we just want to continue to be open. And please do your part to help us do that.
And that's the update I had for this meeting, Mr. Miko, and board members, unless you had any questions.
Any questions for Cameron or Jenny? So I will close with a, just two quick comments. I do think it's important, we're getting the first vaccine on February-
I do think it's important, we're getting the first vaccine on February 11th. The 95% to 100% immunity that that vaccine, the vaccines deliver, isn't until, is it 11 or 14 days after March 4th? So yeah, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, but it would be foolish to think that, hey, once February 11th passes, we can let our guard down. I look at, I look at everything we're doing as getting us ready, so that we, so that next school year can be vastly different. But this school year, we still, the consequences are still there, and they're still large. And then the only other comment I wanted, the other comment I wanted to share was that I wouldn't want anyone to make any conclusions as far as, you know, what are we trying to accomplish? Do we want to keep people in school, do we want to keep people out of school? We want our default position to be keeping everyone as safe as possible, and making, using the data to make wise judgments, to minimize risk, but also not to have it outsized. You know, ultimately, we could just go remote for the next three months, but that's unacceptable also. So it is a balancing act, but in every case, we're always trying to make a intelligent, sensible, safe decision, and I think the past week, we really have shown how we can do that. Without any other questions, I'm assuming that concludes, or no, you have one other item on your agenda?
Yeah, just on our human resources, we have a memorandum of understanding. Be resolved upon my recommendation, that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Strongsville Education Association is stated in Exhibit A, be accepted. And that concludes my report.
Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar at this point of the agenda, means all items in the agenda marked with asterisks are adopted by one single motion, unless someone requests otherwise. Do I have any request otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum, any discussion? George, take the roll.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Number nine is board policies, we have a number of policies on third reading, all of these were vetted by the policy committee, and reviewed by all the board members, and this is the third and final reading. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum, any discussion?
I just have something I want to draw our attention to, Cameron. Revised policy 4560 speaks to the graduation requirements. A lot of these policies are kind of just updated to kind of get the legal language to where it needs to be in 2021, but this one is directly related to our high school and our high school graduation requirements. Can you do a little snippet on what you told the board about what adjustment we're making and why?
Sure, so one of the, the adjustment that we're making is, we are making a communications course be a required part of graduation. So one half-credit of communications will now be a graduation requirement, starting with a certain class, so I believe it's our freshman class, that will have that as a requirement before they graduate. The reason being, over the past few years, we have a business advisory council, we work with them, we work with our teachers, and the number one thing we hear from our business partners, is that our students, whether it be from college, or just straight into career, they need to bolster and work and develop their communication skills, whether written, verbal, interpersonal skills. So we took that seriously, and we've had a communications course for a while, but we felt that this was such an important need for our students to be successful post-high school, that this half-credit hour semester course would be a required part of graduation. So, for our current freshmen, that will be in effect as we go through, and all, as students sign up for their courses next year, they have the option to take it, but it will be a junior or senior course, for students based on their schedule to take.
As someone who's taught at, in the college level, in the English department, I recognize right away that what the business advisory council is saying is true, and I'm really excited, I mean, I know these policies aren't all that exciting, but I'm really excited about this one, I got to read the textbook, I was very pleased with what I saw, and I think this is going to help make us that premier district that we want to be. So, thank you for paying attention to what the community needs and wants.
I would, I would, if I wanted to, argue with you on the excitement of the policy committee, but I don't, I don't want to. I will, I will say, as Michelle mentioned, all of the policies, or the majority of the policies are to keep them up-to-date and accurate and compliant with law. I was going to draw attention to 6144 investments, it gives us a little bit more flexibility, but it still maintains the safety of the bunny that the taxpayers entrust to us. Any other discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries. Ten, Board of Education, other, have a board member training, be it resolved at the Strongsville City School, Board of Education grants approval for Sherri Buckner-Sully to attend the virtual school negotiations workshop, available on demand, from January to February, the cost to register is $25. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sherri, did you want to share with us what you were able to do?
Well, the webinar covers the district, so I invited the whole board, and I sent an email to everyone, so they can all participate in that seminar itself, so you should receive a code or something.
We saw it in the email, and I wanted to thank you for not only attending the seminar, but making sure to maximize the ability for all of us to attend it, and if all five of us attend, then it's $5 a person, so I think that's money well spent. Mr. Rottig, ask him?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Hausum?
Yes.
Is it this one? Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries.
We do have need for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment and discipline of a public employee, and to prepare and review negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of employment.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum, any discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries, and we will enter into executive session at 8:00 PM. We have no expectation of additional business. Thank you, everyone, for your attention, and have a great weekend.